Okay, I believe we have the entire city council. Are they all able to hear?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yep, I can hear you. Hold on one second, please. Okay, we're waiting just a second to see if I have Nancy's computer set where it can record for us. Brad's up there trying to get it. Okay, says it's recording with now five thirty, so I will ask that our meeting come to order. Zach, do you not have a webcam?
I still don't have a webcam.
Okay, I'm just trying to figure out where my city council people are. Okay. Thank you all for joining us this way again. Apologize for the inconvenience, but it's just a sign of the times. Okay, first order of business tonight is the approval of last month's minutes. Did anybody notice any errors? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve. Harlan?
Second.
Second by Ryan, all in favor?
I.
Zach, if you oppose anything tonight, please speak up loudly.
I will do that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, minutes were approved by Mary. Item is the payables. Anybody have a question there?
Is on the, for Marvin planning, the comprehensive plan, is that just like a down payment?
Yeah, we've been just making payments.
Okay, okay.
As he goes, does some stuff as we go along.
Okay.
Anything else? Motion to approve the payables?
Also moved.
Dustin, was that a question or was that a motion? Okay. I can't hear you, Dustin. So we had a motion by whom?
Zach.
Zach and second by?
I believe it was Erica.
Yeah.
Okay, Erica, all in favor?
I.
I.
Okay, motion passes five oh. Tonight's agenda, anybody got an addition?
I'll move to approve the agenda as is.
Second. Second.
All in favor?
I.
Five oh. Okay, Tanya Rohr. We'll kind of turn things over to you for time, Dave.
Good evening. I also am having a little bit of trouble hearing you, so I apologize. I'll try to to speak up as well. Can everyone hear me? Okay, good. So my name is Tanya Rohr, and I am the newly appointed, I guess, director of the senior companion in foster grandparent programs. Jolene Nuremberger, who most of you probably have seen here several times, many, many times, retired in November. And so I have taken over the role as director of both programs. And I actually worked for Jolene in the early two thousands as a coordinator for the foster grandparent program. So I already had some some background and some familiarity with that program and senior companions as well. So I'm here today to request from you all funding for next year. As you could see in the information that I provided, in twenty nineteen, we had three foster grandparents serving at the grade school there. And they served over three thousand three hundred sixty-six hours and helped twenty-two children in the classrooms. Our program provided them for their service for their time a stipend of almost nine thousand dollars. In addition to that, we also provide them with a travel stipend, and that's approximately two thousand dollars as well. So those funds get paid directly to the foster grandparents, non-taxable stipend for their service. And those are able to come right back into the community. So they serve the children and the and the community that way. And then also hopefully benefit that your community in the form of those stipends and those payments. So we are not requesting any additional funding this year. We kept the funding request the same as last year. Our expenses have gone up. For the first time since two thousand two, Congress approved an increase in the stipend for our volunteers. So that stipend went up from two dollars and sixty-five cents to three dollars an hour for the stipend. And that just happened officially in April. They started earning that additional amount. So just want to make you aware of that, cost of increase, but we know that times are going to be hard right now, as you indicated. Just a sign of the times and just where we're at with things right now. It's just tough for everyone. And we really appreciate the support that you've given in the past. I'm not requesting any funding for senior companions this year. And I wanted to tell you why and why that is, and just basically the numbers of our volunteers in Victoria have gone down. And so while I'm not asking for any funding, I still would really like to ask for your help. And that would be in the form of promoting our programs. If you know someone in the community who's over fifty-five, who would like to serve in the community as a foster grandparent or senior companion. We would love to hear about that. We would love for you to share our information with them, you know, or share their names with us, and we can reach out to them and see if our program can help them as well. Our volunteers really do benefit from that stipend that they receive, and they rely on it. And a lot of times in our communities, there's already those seniors who are already serving and helping their neighbors and helping in their in the community. And so we can, you know, join together with them and provide them the the stipend and the travel allowance, the training that we offer, the recognition, just all those things that we would love to do that. We'd love to get back to the numbers that we had years ago in in Victoria. So anyway, that that's what I'm asking for on that side of things. So I just wanted you to kind of help me with that if you can, if we can come and speak to a group or or do any of those those things that can help us grow in Victoria. We would love to do that. Does anyone have any questions about the the request?
Tanya, is that correct? It looks like the annual cost for one is four thousand, but you only request one thousand from the city? Can you explain where the difference comes from?
Yeah, we're just, we, and I honestly, I just went along with what Jolene has always or has done, it looks like, over the last few years. We do get support from the county, the agents or the council on aging. So we do get some funding there as well. And so we're just asking for a partial support. What the support does for us is it helps meet our federal match. And the more entities that we can show our grantee that have bought into the program, believe in the program, the better. And so we're not, we would take full funding, of course, if that was in the city's budget and in the interest of the community to do that. But what we really just want is to know that you're as invested and interested in our programs and wanting to help keep them there. So and there are really, they are estimates in those numbers, too. The stipend, of course, is just dependent on how many hours each serve. We have some who serve more than. And that's an approximately twenty hours a week is what that amounts to. We have volunteers who serve forty hours a week. And it just varies. So those are all, they're all just estimated numbers.
You said that your numbers were down. How how far down are they here in Victoria?
I just, and I'm going from when I worked in the program years ago. I think I want to say we had six or eight or even ten volunteers, a senior companions involved in Victoria. We have one currently serving in Victoria now. I don't know what that accounts for. I think Marlene Dingle, who was coordinator for our program at that time, probably had a big part in having so many volunteers in in Victoria. She she kind of was, had a way about talking to people and and getting them involved and on board and and was a member of Victoria. So I think that that helps, always helps, having someone within the community, you know, share their experiences. And and so I think that's partly why.
Is there a need for more volunteers over here?
I believe that there are. I don't have the specific requests in front of me. I apologize. I can't imagine that there there's not a need. I mean, there seems like every community that we we go into, there there are people who need to be visited. They need someone to, you know, check in on them, let them know that they that they care. They maybe need a, you know, a ride to the beauty shop or to a doctor's appointment. So and maybe Victoria takes care of their their community very well already. And I'm guessing neighbors are already doing this, family are already doing these things. What we can do is take some of that burden from failing members who are caring for for their loved ones, too.
Okay. Just so I'm clear, like, the the funding request for twenty twenty-one really focuses more on the the school side of things. There's there's other community members that need help, too, correct? It's not just the school age kids.
Right, so foster grandparents itself and the requests that I'm asking for with the foster grandparents, typically it is the grade schools that can utilize, utilize their services, but senior companions, if we can get some volunteers going over there, and if there is, like Mr. Up said, if there's a need, and I believe that there is, we're kind of in a catch 22, I'll be honest. We don't advertise our services. Because when we do, we get overrun with requests, and we can't match them always with enough volunteers to come through. And so that's why the word of mouth seems to work really well for our program. It's someone who's already in the program or someone like you all who know the people in the community, who know that their neighbor down the street is needing someone to look after them. They need a little help. Or maybe they would like to serve, and they could use that stipend. Or not. None of our volunteers are stipended, but many meet an income eligibility and are able to take that non-taxable stipend and help them. So it's just, it's kind of a balancing act that we have to to do with having enough volunteers and clients. We usually get more more client requests than volunteer interest as well, so.
Are there any other questions? Can you hear me better now, too?
Yes.
Well, does somebody want to make a motion for a thousand dollars to the foster grandparent program?
I shall move.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Okay. Is there anything else tonight for you, Tanya?
Just thank you for your support. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your time. Okay, I believe we're up to department heads. Okay, so I'm just gonna slide out and let Cole talk. And once Cole's done, Brad will just take his place. I really don't have much tonight, other than we did get our taser equipment. We're gonna kind of wait back through the county to see when they're gonna get their new shipments. And then we're gonna all train together. That way there's no cost in anything as far as that goes. So you probably won't see us carrying those until about to August. So I think we'll keep our our old ones, and we won't have to turn those in until then, which is probably good. We can use up the batteries we paid for and hopefully not a few more cartridges. Moving on from that, the big thing I have is property in town. Of course, these are gonna be the same old, same old. I'm already noticing again, Ron Quinn property. That's gonna be an issue, and it's becoming a bigger eyesore and dilapidating as we speak. I would highly doubt he's done anything to that property since it's on fire. I would encourage everybody to drive by there, give it your own assessment. You know, the rain gutter laying off of it hanging. It is, it is rough, and I barely see him there. I'm assuming he's staying somewhere in Queens, maybe with a girlfriend or family member, who knows? But it is a problem, and neighbors in the area, I will keep them nameless at their request. We do need to do something about it. And then the other one, of course, is going to be the LaFreddy property. We're constantly closing the front door. I don't know if the wind's blowing it in or if some kids are getting in there. So when the door is wide open, you can see what's going on in there. It is full of mold, starting from the ceiling, working down due to leaks in the roof. I consider it a health hazard. If we do see anybody around there, we're definitely going to use enforcement to keep them away for that reason.
What can we do to keep the doors locked at the rest home?
Best thing we can do is throw some two-by-fours on the front, screw them into the wall. Or, you know, keep the door shut that way. Maybe screw it into the door as well to keep it from blowing inward. Now, if some kids or someone are going in there, of course, they can break a window, get through it. It's, there's a lot of different ways to access it. That's the door that we're having trouble with, which I did several times a day, but usually it's on a high wind day, so I'm gonna assume that's the culprit. But it is full of mold. It is a health hazard. It's not even habitable. It can't be. There's no way without tearing it down to the ground and starting over. And the buildings catty-corner from it that are owned by the same owner, the two sheds on that lot. They need to, they need to come down as well.
Now, the one, the door's missing. The tin one looks pretty good.
They're they're pretty rough. They're dirt floor, and I, there's a lot of rot if you get inside them.
On the tin one or that little one?
You're talking about the ones catty-corner from that trailer house?
No, the, you said the, on the rest home, the two buildings.
Oh, the rest home? Okay, now that there, yeah, that's a different ballgame. Yeah, that building on the north side of the property is good.
Okay, you're referring to, that you're referring to the mold in the rest home, right?
No, the mold in the mobile home over at twelve and a half.
Okay.
Yeah, that, it's a resident. I'm gonna say twelve oh one a half.
If that's all, that's just a single wide there, right?
Yeah, it's a single wide that's been added on to.
Yeah.
So are the are the sheds at eleven oh six Ash? Is that? Because on our, in our packet, we got two eleven oh six addresses, and I had a hard time.
That's probably the address.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, because one was Cedar and one was Ash.
Yeah, yeah, Cedar is Ron Quinn.
Okay.
And then the third property would be the rest home that we need to address. Jim Fansteel, who was mowing it last year, has confirmed he is not going to mow it anymore. So it is becoming a thick vegetation. It's already out of code right now. And he has even expressed that he would like to make a complaint for the property being too far gone, which is which is shocking, I guess. So he is no longer going to pursue that as a as a usable structure.
Who owns eleven oh six Ash?
That would be the same owner as twelve oh one, Candace K. LaFreddy.
Did we send her something? Did we send her something before?
Yes, I think we started the process on that with Quinn at that time. Maybe, I don't know. I'd have to look into.
Sounds, sounds familiar.
Yeah, every year, I mean, I cite her every year.
Well, same with Ron Quinn, same with the rest home, all three of them.
Yeah, it's just a, it's it's gonna be a constant, they'll never do anything. In fact, I think LaFreddy properties actually went to sheriff's sale due to lack of taxes.
Was that the two, the two garages? They just put new hinges on the door. On the big door, not that, but they left the broken windows out there to walk in.
Yeah, well, they, nobody did at that sheriff's sale. And she told me when I sent her the letter last year after the sale or after the attempted sale, she said she thought she was off the hook because it went to that process. I said, no, as long as your name is still on the tax roll, you are responsible under our city code to maintain the property. That's why you would be incited. And so she's very understanding of that. And I actually had to drive to Hayes and deliver those citations because she wasn't signing for them through certified mail. So we had to find out through our dispatch basically where she's staying.
Oh, I remember that.
Yeah, and I think we forwarded that to your office, maybe.
Yeah, you did.
Okay.
What's her name again?
Candace LaFreddy, L O F F R E D I. Should have her information there on the county appraiser website if you get on there.
Okay.
Properties, do the parcel search.
Okay.
Wonder what it would cost to tear down the rest home?
Sky's the limit there. I don't know, because you're gonna have, you're gonna, you might run into issues with hall law, you know, where they have to go with certain parts of it. I don't know what's there as far as.
I don't think there's any asbestos in there.
Yeah, it's it's a fairly new structure, really. Yeah. Brad is telling.
Built in the sixties.
Brad's telling me he thinks there is. Now, I know there's that one addition that was done in the maybe mid eighties.
Right.
Ambulance entrances.
The parts of. The, yeah, the the east side was the first part of it. And then they added on to the west.
Right, right, yeah, that west side's gonna be the eighties. So you're gonna be in the clear there, but that that first part, we might have it in there.
Okay.
Isn't there a way to get special exemptions on buildings like that?
That's gonna be a Dawn question, I think.
Special exemptions, what do you mean?
Concerning the asbestos or anything, like it could be buried closer or whatever?
I, the only, only thing I've ever been aware of is they haul it to Nebraska.
I wonder if, I don't know, if Dang D Hanson Foundation, they have any help with something like that?
Sure would be hurt to try. Who would you call to have something like that torn down?
Well, right now, right now, there's a lot of help out there with the oil being down.
I mean.
Is that something we could get an estimate on?
That's what I was.
Yeah.
I'd say with the current situation, there's a lot of heavy equipment being parked around that they're looking for anything, pawn cleanouts, you name it. So we may be able to get a lot of bids on that that are coming in a lot less than what we normally would.
Dawn, is there other stuff we would have to do in the meantime, though, to have it set up to where we were at a point where we could tear it down? If we got back some some bids that were reasonable?
I think what you're gonna have to do is you're gonna have, whoever bids on it has, is going to have to go inside and see what what is still in there. There's, I mean, there's a probably quite a bit of stuff in there yet.
Well, on top of that.
That main part, that main part is built out of solid concrete. I mean, that thing's, that isn't gonna blow away in a tornado.
What 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 are we going to be able to do with it after we tear it down?
I just own the lot.
That's right.
Yeah, because the the cost of park exceed the value.
So then it wouldn't go to to sheriff's auction or anything like that. It would just come to us.
Yeah, it'd have to just go to us. I don't know what you do with it, but I guess you could, some point, maybe. Well, there was, there, is there a basement in that? I think there is.
There is a little one.
Yeah, there, because I remember there being one in there, but.
Yeah, but Brad's saying both ends, so.
Both ends, okay. But if if we do get good bids or whatever, are we capable of just going in there and tearing it down? Do we have to go through some process, too? We'll have to go through a process.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering. Should we start that process now, so that way, if we got back some good bids, we'd be ready to act instead of having to wait?
I think the maximum you might have to wait would be probably thirty to sixty days, and I don't see a lot of improvement in thirty to sixty days, but you never know.
Is there any way that?
We ought to tear down all three of them. I mean, all three of them have been a mess.
Yeah, they're they're not gonna get better. It's just gonna continue to get worse.
It's gonna be every year.
Even though Quince is a current residence that's, we're considering occupied due to water and everything. He's never, but, I mean, we gotta be real here. He's never gonna do anything to it. If he was going to, he'd already done it. And I'm not sure he isn't staying in that camper when he's back here instead of the house.
Actually, we're gonna have to request that you got, you can go in and look at the inside of it, too.
Yeah. Yeah.
Just so you could say that it's uninhabitable.
I would like myself and maybe John to go in there. That way we have a representative of the.
In case something falls on you, somebody lifted off.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll send him first, so.
Should we?
I'd take along a gun.
Should we send Terry, too, since he's the building inspector?
We could do that, yeah.
Yeah, Terry ought to go.
We can, we can hit it from all ends there, then.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I, let's be real, it's not gonna go anywhere. He's.
No, all three of them are.
Actually, on that Quint house, you might be able, if it's condemned, and he has, I know those stones could be sold because Justin Scheck sold all of that, his stones from that house he tore down out there. And I think most of them are being used up here by the St. Fidelis Parish to put in a new sign there.
Okay. That works.
Is the city able to make money on something like that?
Well, either that or you make it a part of the bid.
Yeah.
You know, let them take it, and they're gonna let them have it. I don't know that we want to be in the business of selling stone.
Yeah.
What what you'll do is the person who tears it down, he's responsible for cleaning it up after he gets the stones. You don't, he don't pay for it or anything. He just comes in and says, I'll clean it up, and then he gets the stones.
Should we start the process on all three of them?
Is there any way, Dawn, that we can charge the teardown of the rest home to the owner?
It can be assessed to the property. But, you know, what are your cha, we, I don't know that we've ever collected a dime on any of the houses we've torn down.
So.
It's a lien on the property itself.
Okay, so we spend seven hundred and fifty thousand to tear it down. There's gotta be a way to get that back. Is that a long, protracted legal battle?
Well, isn't, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that the rest home's owned by an LLC, isn't it?
Yeah.
Well, they're probably smart enough to put it in an LLC, and what they'll do is they'll bankrupt the LLC.
Now, I think that's what a lot of these companies that buy it are doing.
Yeah, they're all putting them in LLCs.
They're buying it as a tax write-off sight unseen, and then they bankrupt and walk on.
If they can sell it, yeah.
Well, when when we went to look with it, with what, that was Tim Cosarts? I mean, his, his idea was to put lots in there. I mean, that would be, again, does the city want to get into doing that? But that is a way to recoup some funds.
Well, try to sell it to a developer.
That could be possibility.
Either way, my personal opinion on it, in my position, is the sooner the better, because it's just gonna get worse. So, and I think right now, if we have an opportunity to get some lower bids on it with all the equipment that's sitting out there and guys looking for, companies looking for work to keep their help, maybe this is the icing on the cake.
Well, then let's proceed.
So.
We get a motion?
I'll make a motion.
All three?
Yep.
I'll second it. I'll second it. I wanna see him go.
All in favor?
So, so are you guys willing to like get a loan or something to pay for that? Cause you don't have a, like in capital improvement, there's not enough money for like seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to pay to get that removed.
Mary, I think right now I just want a motion that we proceed with the process to get.
To get it started.
Get those cleaned up and then we'll see what the bids look like, then decide how to pay for it.
Okay.
I don't think people are gonna be very happy that we're paying to tear down their nursing home. But.
Just the ones that are living by it basically.
Oh, the ones that are living by it'll be happy.
They'll be stoked.
Yeah, everybody else is gonna be ticked off that we're spending that kinda money.
Yeah. I'm gonna keep the town clean, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's gotta happen somehow. Otherwise, we turn into, uh, we turn into junk.
Yeah.
Okay, Cole, you got anything else?
That's all I got for you guys unless you have something for me. And I understand we're holding off Ryan's, uh, eval again for a while, so.
Did we vote on the motion?
That's just what I was gonna ask. I don't remember you.
Yeah.
For all three?
For all three, yes.
And Harland, your mo, your second still stands?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thanks, Cole. Brad's coming up now.
Good evening. Uh, don't have a whole lot to talk about. I guess the first thing that's easy is y'all had an email earlier about the saw that we're intent on purchasing to replace our old existing concrete saw. Uh, we did find, we had priced some new ones. We had found a used one in Hayes, which you got the email on from John, that is actually bigger, self-propelled and so forth than the one we were looking at for about the same money. I think it was twenty-six hundred. Um, that's the saw that we're looking at from Sweeney in Hayes from, uh, Sweeney's Concrete Sleeping or Service or whatever. That should, uh, serve our purpose for quite a while. Don't think there's any questions on that, first off. Figure that's a no. Touch base, uh, on the, on the swimming pool real quick. Full intentions of having it up and running by the fifteenth. Uh, doing a little more extensive work on the filtering system and so forth over there that needs to be done. We had some failures on it last year. We just kinda band-aided through the end of the year, so we actually started on some of that. Pretty much from there, the basics, maybe replacing a few lights inside, going to some LEDs and getting rid of some old incandescent bulbs and stuff, but not a whole lot out of the ordinary, except mainly the filtering system. Any questions on that?
Nope.
Okay. Getting ready to do some crack spraying too. It's no big deal. Just make any wear of it if anybody says anything about weeds growing up on the streets, whatever. This is about the time of year we do that, so we're geared enough to do that. Um, and actually, I was gonna bring it up anyway on the Rest Home mowing, because I know it does look like crap. Um, and I know we're probably gonna get stuck mowing it. But one question I do have is we do have somebody occupying the metal building with power and a padlock on the door. So my question is, do we need to make sure that person is out of there if we're going to be going into there and doing work and chaining doors shut and so forth to prevent entry and that sort of thing?
You have to check with Jim.
I'm assuming it's Jim, but I don't know that for sure.
I think it is, okay?
Would, would, wouldn't that just fall under the owners of the nursing home? I mean, that's part of the nursing home, so.
If he's leasing it though, I don't know if he's paying anything for it. If he's got, if he's got possession, I'd want him to take care of it.
That's my point, exactly. Either that or lose possession, one or the other.
Yeah.
He'll lose possession real quick.
That's my whole point. If we're gonna go in and lock up and start mowing it and so forth, we probably ought to do just that, lock it up and, and so forth. So that's something we probably ought to decide on what we wanna do with that. It needs to be mowed soon. Uh, I would say I mean, possibly this week if we can get up there. But anyway, so I guess give me a heads up on what we wanna do with that. It does have Midwest Energy Power to it right now with the meter hanging on it, so, and a padlock on the one door, so.
Can we as a, can we as a city find out who, who has the contract with Midwest Energy?
I think I can, yes.
If I remember from when we walked into that building a year or two ago, Jim was paying for the electricity. That's when he had that individual helping him and they stored their mowers in there.
Right.
Right, Brad?
Right. I know they had mowers stored in there and stuff. I know that when they were working there.
Just call Jim up and see if he's got anything in there that he wants and then.
Yeah.
All right, and then we'll probably, unless you guys tell me not to, then we'll probably try to fit mowing it into our schedule as of tonight.
Yeah, I'd put it in there.
Hey Brad, how far into the draw is, is that property? Like who's responsible for mowing it?
The draw, the property goes all the way over to the east to the property owner's fence.
Okay.
That whole, that entire draw is part of the Rest Home property.
Okay.
So it's gonna add some time to, it'll add a, a good day's worth of mowing, you know, and so forth up there, so.
Right.
Every week, so. Uh, I really don't have a whole lot else. Um, like I said, the pool's probably the priority, trying to get that going. Um, I intend on trying to have that uh, painted and, and actually start filling it right at the end of the month here, so it gives a little time for water to warm up and things to balance out and so forth, so we'll see. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Brad, do you need me to do anything? What?
Not, not really. I mean, for now, all we're going to do is we'll go up and, uh, evacuate the building, clean everything out of there, get it all into position, give us room to, to get around. And then, uh, the next thing we'll start doing is getting the, the pool itself that we
Okay.
For paint. It's kind of a, you gotta just, you know, go with the weather at that point.
Right.
Couple, a couple of good days to get it washed dry and then painted. So not really, but I will stay in contact with you as we go.
Okay, I'm, I'm wondering if like, uh, disinfecting ti, I mean, we use, what we've used in the past is pine coal and stuff. If I can just, is that good, you think? Just make sure we do it every day?
That's a question that we probably ought to confirm with K D H E or whoever, cause I can't tell you what their requirements are. I can tell you chlorine in the water will be disinfected enough to kill anything.
Right, right.
Other than that, on the external surfaces and so forth.
Okay.
I can't really tell you.
Okay. And also.
Go ahead.
I guess asking everybody else too, do you want me to try to schedule swimming lessons in July? Or do you, should we just wait and see? I've had people already asking.
Karen, we'll get to that in just a minute.
Okay, sorry, I thought this was the time, sorry.
Okay, not quite yet.
Any questions for me or any other issues, uh, we need to address in town?
Hey, what about the new parking signs over there on Ninth?
Um, I'll be real honest, I just haven't put them up for one reason. And I guess I'll, uh, I'll, I'll take some opinions. Which side are we gonna put them on or are we putting them on both?
I thought we decided on both.
I do believe we decided on both sides.
Okay, well, if that, I mean, if that's what we wanna do, then we'll get that accomplished. The only reason, uh, I know that there's a party on the west end of that street parks on there now, and there's a party on the east end of the street that parks on there both directions, so it's not really fair to block one side off of the other. If you tell me to do both, that's what we'll do. We'll just put them on both sides. Anything else? All right, that's all I've got.
Thanks, Brad.
Okay, just cleaning things up. Could we get a motion to purchase the concrete saw that Brad talked about? Dustin, your second? Ryan, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, I think there's nothing needed to do there. All right, Karen, now we will start talking about.
Sorry.
Oh, you're fine. Um, we're probably gonna combine this. Um, yeah, we'll do this now. So with the changing in the phase in, are we still gonna shoot for June fifteenth for opening the pool?
What I can say is based on what we got, everything is tentative right now. The pool gonna be hard to segregate them. But my question is, what if you have one child get the virus? What do we do then? Do we close the pool?
I would assume so. I'm looking at Cole as a health officer, if he has any input.
I would like to see us push it off at least a day because our meeting is on the fifteenth. So we, we'll know a whole lot more at our June meeting. I wouldn't go any earlier than the sixteenth.
Okay, what do you guys think about that?
I get what you're trying to accomplish with that Zach, but I, Karen, does that create problems for you with scheduling wise, a day's notice? I mean, everybody's kinda living off of a short notice right now, so there is that part of it, but um, are you gonna lose any kids to lifeguarding who are gonna go look for other jobs if they're not guaranteed a job? Or do you think we'll be okay?
Well, I already have three, possibly four, trying to find day jobs, saying they probably won't be able to work much during the day, cause they're already starting other jobs. I don't know. I mean, I think I'll be fine, but if it goes on any longer, I don't know that. But I, it's out of our hands too, I mean.
It just, it just makes it to the, where we don't have to do a special meeting on like the eighth of June when things don't change again, or things do change again.
So like, so then do we need to say tentative date opening June sixteenth? I mean, I need to kinda give people a heads up of.
Ever, uh, everything's sort of tentative right now. Even the June fifteenth is tentative.
Right, but at least they know that's what, I know where we're planning. I mean, if things change, it's out of our control. They get that, but to know that we at least have a scheduled.
Don't, don't you think she'll make a decision that Friday before? Isn't that what she's done typically?
Yeah, you're talking about the governor?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's usually like the Thursday.
Okay, so if we, if we just say tentative opening date of fifteenth, we'll be fine. I mean, if it's, if it gets continued, the one point five becomes one point seven five or whatever it might be, then we can just put something on Facebook and say it, you know, the tentative date been pushed back. I mean.
Yeah.
I, I think, I think it's good to plan for things to open up and if something happens, then we can make a simple change. And it, it's unfortunate with the lifeguard situation, because obviously they probably wanna work over the summer and make money and.
And then, and then I guess I have, so right now, tentatively, the June fifteenth is ninety people, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, ninety. Okay, I guess I was worried, so what if they would say drop it back to thirty or sixty? Would we still not open?
I would say open with sixty. That still gives you, that's six foot allotment, you know?
Yeah, and I guess my other concern there is if I'm, I'm all for opening and we'll do whatever, but I guess my concern is what if we start having people from surrounding towns coming?
I see that becoming an issue.
Yes, how do I control that or do I need to control that? What do?
Yeah, it's public pool, so.
Okay, okay.
One thing that I do know that is if we open before the phase four or the phase out, I can't remember which one, you will be required to do daily CDC level of cleaning.
Which is, which means what?
I don't know.
Okay.
Well, that's if, if Governor Kelly makes her decision on Thursday, do, do we need a city council meeting to change the date of this?
No, I'd say let's, let's have a tentative date of June fifteenth. If we get to phase three of the state reopening plan. Does that sound acceptable?
I think so.
That way, if the state pushes it back, we automatically get pushed back.
And the only stipulation I want is that if we have a sick child, then we have to shut it down because I don't wanna spread the virus.
Well, no, no, you mean just a kid that has been at the pool that gets it?
Yes.
Okay, and if we would know that?
You would, just from word of mouth, pretty well.
Yeah.
Attack, tracing, you'll find out.
Yeah, cause you guys log everyone that comes every day anyways, don't you?
Yeah.
What's the maximum that you have at the pool at any given time?
You know, the maximum at, I don't know, I've never been given a maximum.
No, I mean that you do, that you've seen.
Okay, like we get, we have a sign and sheet, a daily signing, sign and sheet with sixty signatures and for us to get to a full sixty or full page for a day is very, very busy.
Okay. So you're pretty safe there.
And that's never at one time. That's throughout the entire day.
Yeah, come and go.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's gonna be hard to get to sixty.
Yeah.
Okay, so was there anything else we needed to discuss with the pool? I don't know, we have another thing on our agenda here with pool manager in a couple minutes. We'll just wait on that.
Do we, do I need, do I need to cap the amount of people that are let in?
That would only depend on what phase we're in.
Okay, okay.
In phase three we do, don't we?
I do believe phase three's ninety, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Which ninety, I can't imagine we'd ever get to ninety.
Unless you have a problem with neighboring towns.
No, right well, and I don't know.
Well, Hayes is gonna open, so you shouldn't have too much trouble.
Right, yeah. I heard Russell wasn't going to, but I don't know.
I've heard that too.
So.
So I'm pretty sure even in phase three, they're supposed to do social distancing. How's the pool gonna do that?
Just, you just gotta walk around and tell them, I guess.
I mean, do you, do you put marks on the sidewalk or, or on the sides?
So, but, so when you're saying social distancing, but can't we, I have ten? I mean, do those ten people still need to be six feet apart?
You know what's. The thing here, excuse me, the thing is that I think all of the kids in Victoria have been meeting each other every day, almost everywhere.
Those ten people do not need to be six feet apart because it'd be like a restaurant. A restaurant can't have a table of more than ten right now. But tables have to be six feet apart.
So, tables of ten have to be related parties, don't they?
Yeah.
That, I, I don't know that, but.
Yeah, right, right now with the ten, it still says maintain six feet social distance. I don't know about the ninety, but the ten you do.
But maybe here in Victoria, we don't have to worry about that, cause we're all related.
I'm not related to anybody here.
Oh, but you're like family, Ryan.
I mean, I, I know what you're saying, Harland, but I don't think that excuses us from the responsibility of withholding the rules.
Yeah.
I think you gotta tell them.
So what are you saying, like put loungers six feet apart? I mean.
I think Hayes said right now they weren't even having chairs out for this.
Really?
Yeah, it had something about, uh, during part of the phases, you would have to bring your own chairs.
Okay, okay. And, and I've communicated with Hayes a little bit and I will more once I find, like just see what they're doing as far as cleaning procedures and stuff to, I'll be in contact with them some more.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't put the chairs out because one child might sit on it and then another one, but you'd have to Clorox it technically according to the rules. You see what I'm saying? So.
Yeah.
Just, they can throw out towels and stuff like that.
Okay. So Brad will have to store those chairs somewhere else.
Yeah, I, I was about to ask Brad that question.
Yeah, cause they're in the boys bathroom.
You think you can't see me on the camera right now?
Um, is there anything else on the pool that we need to discuss? Are you okay with jumping down to pool manager pace so that we can let Karen go after?
Yeah.
After we discussed this? So the pool manager, Mary, it's thirty-six hundred for the season, is that correct?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five, okay. With us having a reduced season, do they get the full amount? Because they're kinda still doing some of this. do they get the full amount, because they're kinda still doing some of the same work? Um, Karen, while we've got you here, are you splitting this with Audrey Staub again?
Yeah.
Okay. I, so what they did last year, I believe you took two thirds Karen and Audrey got a third, is that correct?
Cuz isn't that, isn't it five, Mary, or not?
Five what?
I don't know, is thirty-five mine and then?
No, thirty-five.
Then split two something, okay, okay. Yes, Audrey is doing assistant also.
I would say with all the things that you might have to concern yourself with, or the extra work of cleaning it up and every evening and that, I'd let's just leave the, the thirty-five hundred as is.
When, when does the pool normally open?
Um, usually Memorial weekend.
So I would say with the, the reduced pay for the lifeguards, because we're not gonna be open for at least, what, two weeks, three weeks before normal, I, I would be okay giving the managers full pay.
Ryan, Dustin, Erica?
I guess my, my, my concern is if, if we're gonna go with the full pay, I would kinda like to have it for sure, and, and I mean, not a sure open date, obviously, but a for sure close date too, because I think last year we closed early, is that correct Karen?
Oh, no, we were open up until I couldn't have any guards.
No, it wasn't.
No, because, no, because we stayed open longer, because it was open and I was already back at school. Cuz I, we started school in Hayes early, but we left it open just shorter hours during the day as as long as I could get guards. It depended who was here, when they had practices, who went to call, I mean, that kinda depends. I mean, I'll stay open as long as I can, as long as I have guards.
So what is our typical close date?
Uh, we don't have, I mean, I just go according to when I, as long as I can have people available, basically. I would say last year, because Victoria, I'd have to look back, I don't remember my calendar. I would think, I would think in last year, we stayed open shorter hours till the third week of August at least. Cuz I, I started school like the second week of August, so I was done, and then, um, well, not done, done lifeguarding, and then I would just go, Audrey and I would, or switch off and go get the deposits and stuff during the day, but she was around when I wasn't, cuz she's at Fort Hayes. So it just depends when everybody starts college. I'm trying to think, this year I have one, two, three, four. Four high school girls, five high school girls, and then one, two, three, four.
Karen, I looked on your Facebook page and it said that the last day for the pool, you were open until August twenty-third, and that from the nineteen twenty, to the twenty-third, you were open from one to four.
Yep, that sounds right. Yeah.
I have one, one caveat to throw in there. I have no problem paying the pool, but what happens if we get three weeks into it or four weeks into it, the virus pops up and everything? What do we do on that? Do we still go with giving Karen that, or how do, how do you feel Karen?
Stop paying me, I don't know.
I, I think if we're already vested in paying them the full amount, one, if we get three weeks in and it closes down, we're only out the lifeguard's pay. Or we'll, we'll get back the lifeguard's pay, cuz we're not gonna pay the hourly employees.
Right.
It'll just be the, the managers. This is what it costs to open the pool as a minimum.
Just to imagine, I, I spread their payout over the three months from.
Yeah, it's.
Okay.
I don't pay them all at once.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm not going anywhere. I mean, I, I mean, I, I've been loyal, I don't know that.
Oh, just stay, you're doing a great job.
And you got family here.
Yes.
Yeah, Ryan, Ryan's my family.
So is the city council satisfied to, or in agreement to leave the pool manager pay full amount as for now, subject to possible change?
I am.
Do we need a motion?
No, because it's staying the same, it's not. Dawn, am I wrong?
No, you're fine.
Okay Karen, I believe that's all. Does anybody have anything else for Karen, if she leaves?
No.
You have to leave, but.
Okay, and I probably will. Um, Brad, just be in touch with me, let me know what and I need to do. I, we can come over and help clean too, if need be.
He's nodding in agreement.
Okay, Karen, if you know what supplies you need, just let me know, I can see if it's, might be hard, but we'll try to see if we can order them online somewhere.
Yeah, well, and I, just the pine sole, I just got it at Walmart. They have big old things and the disinfectant.
I, I don't know, you're gonna, I mean, we're gonna need to. Salt or, you know, disinfectant, something like that. And then you might check toilet paper and paper towels, stuff like that.
I will do that. Okay, thank you.
Alright, thanks Karen.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go back up just a few items. Um, Dawn, did you get anything done with licensing tree trimmers?
I sent that to Mary at about four thirty today. I didn't have enough time. Here's, uh, one thing we, one thing you have to do, and you, all of you'll get an opportunity to look at it, and it's the same one that the league sends out, but I think what you, you're gonna have to determine who's going to do the licensing. They actually, y- you're supposed to have them take an oral exam about what they know about tree trimming, and whether they have the appropriate, um, equipment to do it safely.
Is Ha- Hayes is that way?
Yes, Hayes is the same way. Here they have the park manager or park superintendent, and I left it blank on ours, because I don't, I, are any of you park superintendents, but?
Karen's just volunteered.
What about Terry doing it, since he's the building expect, inspector?
Brad, Brad raised his hand, so.
Oh, Brad did?
Either, he said either one, Brad or Terry, so.
And then thinking, you should be able to get a book where you can ask the questions, wouldn't that be possible?
Well, it refers to the Arborist Association, so I would have, I'd think if you just looked up the Arborist Association on internet, you'd find something.
Yeah.
Brad said he knows of such a thing, and he's familiar with it, so it sounds like he's, he's at least looked into it a little bit for it, so.
Well, good.
He and Terry will let them decide, and we will put this off until the next meeting. Does that work?
Yeah, it'll be fine.
Okay, um, here it's look fest donation. Um, Zach, just as a note, I noticed on that, they have a wrong date on something.
The wrong date?
Yeah. Yeah, it's on the, it's on the, uh, the bands or something, isn't it?
Dueling pianos, Saturday, August tenth. I think it should be August eighth.
Oh, I thought I just looked at that.
Either that, or the August seventh and all, and Saturday, August tenth are three days apart.
Yeah, the seventh is Friday, the eighth is Saturday. I'm looking on my phone right now.
So. Um, but that's not really our business, I was just wanting to point that out since Ashley's president, if you might believe.
I, I think so.
Um, how much are they asking for?
Fifteen hundred is what you have, um, in the budget.
Is that what you guys wanna do again this year?
I'm good with that.
Uh, when do we pay that?
Um, if you approve it, I'll pay it, uh, well, if you want me to wait yet, um, till July, or I can pay it at the end of this month, when I do the end of the month payables, or in June, whichever.
I'd like to wait till July, just in case something comes down from the governor.
That sounds fine to me. So there again, like a lot of things, approve it contingent on it not being outlawed by the governor or state action.
So wait till July? They said they would hold it till next year, if, I mean, if you would need a donation next year, if they end up getting canceled in that letter.
So we'll just push this off till July then?
Do you wanna make, are you gonna make the motion to pay it in July, or just put it on the agenda in July again?
I'd put it on the agenda in July.
Okay.
Okay, does that work for everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, unfit properties, we pretty much covered that, correct, Paul? Okay, the fire department, um, this is a late addition. They request that Logan Unryan be, um, appointed to the fire department. Does anybody have a problem with that?
No.
Motion to appoint, to appoint Logan Unryan. Dustin, second.
Second.
Erica, on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, Kevin Klein has resigned as assistant chief, and they would like to appoint John Weber as the new assistant chief. Any objection? Motion to that effect?
Make motion.
I'll second.
Zach, on favor?
Aye.
Okay. Point city officials. Okay, for city clerk, I suggest Mary Piper. Motion by Dustin. Second by Ryan, all in favor? Okay, city superintendent Brad Schmittberger, Dustin still has your hand up, Ryan still has his hand up. All in favor?
I'm out.
Erica abstained. Okay, police chief and health officer Cole Dinkle. Motion by Ryan, second by Harland, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, utility billing clerk Nancy Pyatt.
I'll move.
Ryan, and then Dustin. All in favor?
Aye.
City treasurer Jerry Schmittberger, Dustin's hand is still up, so that's a motion, Ryan the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Public works assistants Terry Riedel and Jeff Fortsweiler. Ryan's hands up first, Harland second, all in favor?
Aye.
Zoning administrator Ryan Mock. Dustin and Ryan, Erica, you're just a little slow.
I know.
I, it's that background taking a bandwidth.
Building inspector Terry Riedel. Erica, Ryan, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, patrol officer Ryan Mock. Dustin, Ryan, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, municipal judge Dawn Pruitt. Dustin, Harland, all in favor?
Aye.
City attorney Dawn Huffman. Ryan, Harland, all in favor?
Aye.
Um, the official newspaper, Russell County News. Ryan and Harland, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and the official depositories Equity Bank, Sunflower Bank, and Goren State Bank.
You don't do any business at Sunflower, do you still wanna appoint them?
I would.
Does it hurt to have them on there?
No, I don't think so. So we're gonna have them, we good having all three?
Yeah.
Motion to that effect? Ryan and Dustin, all in favor?
Aye.
Did I miss any? Did Mary miss any?
Nope, I didn't. Your cheat, cheat helped.
Okay. Nobody here, most citizens are here. Satisfied or coma requirements? Brad, I've, I've got nothing. Anybody got anything else?
No.
Just curious.
I do have one thing, it was for Brad, I should have asked earlier, what are we, what about the generator?
What about the generator?
The electrical, I know we talked. Yes.
Yeah.
I've actually solicited RB Electric again, they're gonna come over and give me a quote again.
Okay, okay.
They actually gave us a quote on it when we were looking at getting the generator from them.
Mm-hmm.
A couple years ago, but I did solicit another one from him, he said it probably would be the same, but anyway, so.
Okay.
What about C and T Electric here in town?
He won't do it.
He shut down.
Yeah, he's not thriving anymore.
Okay.
He works for somebody else now.
Okay.
I've actually called him two or three times, and he responded, said he looked, but I haven't seen him at all.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, anything else?
No.
Alright, there's no further business, I would like a motion to adjourn.
I move.
My second.
Harland, on favor?
Aye.
Thank you guys so much.
Stay, stay.
Stay healthy everybody, please.